Call the meeting, no order, and ask for a roll call.
Balunier?
Here.
Hilliard?
Here.
Leach? Minnold?
Here.
Newman?
Here.
Parrot?
Here.
Can you join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance. To the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
We have no public hearings or presentations or special reports. Public comment? Consent agenda tonight is the approval of the minutes from the regular meeting of March 18, 2024, and the approval of the bills. We could have a motion. Any questions? Call the roll.
Balunier?
Yes.
Hilliard?
Yes.
Minnold?
Yes.
Newman?
Yes.
Parrot?
Here.
Yes.
Motion carries.
I have the only one thing I have tonight is a picture in front of you is on North Main Street I went by where the gas department was disconnecting one of the gas lines to two buildings that are being joined, and they had that hydro excavator there. And he says, so did you put it and make a hole and then bring the backhoe in? No, they did it all with that hydro excavator. It's about five foot wide by 30 inches wide and about four feet deep. And they sucked that whole thing out around the fiber and everything and put it in the tank on the truck and then dis- it was quite intriguing, all the pipes in there. So they had to pose for a picture. So, you want to add anything to that, Scott?
Thank you very much for letting us purchase this. It's been great to have, especially with all these fellows who are making it very busy in the ground.
Yeah, Eric Smickall told me they use it all the time for things like this.
How many gallons of water does it take to make a hole like that?
I would say that hole was about 200 gallons of water.
How quick does it dig it out?
That hole that you're looking at probably took about 35 minutes. You don't want to fancy what kind of ground you're in, how hard or something.
But there's no dirt on the sidewalks, there's grass. I mean, it's cleaned around there, it's in the truck. Quite impressive, so. Thank you. Nothing else tonight? Village Clerk?
He's sick tonight.
Village Administrator?
I have one item tonight, Your Honor, that is the budget for fiscal year 2025, which will be May 1, 2024 through April 30, 2025.
If we could have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve. Second.
You want to say anything else about the budget?
I'd be glad to answer any questions. I sent this out to you all earlier. We're looking at 41 million, just over 41 million in revenues and just over 53 million in expenses for a deficit budget of 12 million this year due to all the capital projects.
Finishing up the water treatment building in Burt's Wood. It all becomes assets.
Correct.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Hilliard?
Yes.
Minnold?
Yes.
Newman?
Yes.
Parrot?
Yes.
Balunier?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Chief of Police? And he is going to speak at the forecast breakfast, so you might all want to come and hear the police chief talk. So, Corporation Council?
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
All right, Director of Fire Emergency Services?
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
All right, Director of Public Works?
Several items tonight, Your Honor. First in front of you is I have a, I'd like to ask for acceptance of the proposal in the amount of $943,463 from Corin Maine for the following items as part of the install of new advanced metering infrastructure through Census for both gas and water.
If we could have a motion?
Motion to approve. Second.
You want to add anything to it?
Yeah, this is just the first phase in this process. Superintendent Stidman came here tonight. Obviously, he's been a big part of this. The first phase of trying to switch over from our current radio read to more smart meters as we go forward. This will be the first phase. The issue that we're running into is the batteries or the radios on the gas side are beginning to fail fairly fast. Our water meters are through Badger, thus our radios are through Badger. They do not have a long-term solution on the gas side, so we've been having issues. So our radios are dying, and Scott's been eager with myself and Superintendent Reed to get this going. We've talked to Census for several years, I think now. A lot's changed, I think, from several years ago. The biggest one being they'll be able to merge the two systems together so that we don't have to rush the water meters yet, but this would lead us to eventually having to replace our water meters and the water radios also. I think this is a long-term solution. Hopefully, it's not me here replacing the radios, and they last, you know, 20 years. It's probably not exactly as advertised, but this is a long-term solution for that. The meters we'd have to purchase anyway, I think the big change we're going to have is at some point we need to just pull the trigger in the next three to five years and have a fairly quick replacement plan with that. But we would spend more time with all of you to kind of detail all that. So being the first phase, Scott would like to order these radios for residential and commercials. Commercials, he would install with his personnel immediately, and then we would develop a plan for FY '26 for install of all the residencials. We'd like to purchase those radios, though. We're not sure right now if we would hire a contractor through Corin Maine or potentially even summer help. We've done that in the past. We want to do a little more work, look into that, making sure that that's a path we would want to go. At the same time, we would finalize a plan for water meters with all of you and the radios to begin replacing those. Obviously, the radios are tougher on the water side because those are inside people's houses. Right now, we can go read, I'm not sure how many we have now, Scott. Do you have a number that we're having to send Chad out to read right now?
We're over 100.
Yep.
I have 120.
And we're at quite a few each month. So this will at least solve that short-term problem, but also set us up long-term. We feel Census is the route to go. They're in Tremont and Washington. We have local reps, and then obviously Corin Maine is who we can purchase those through. So I think we'd like to move forward with that. So with that, I'd be happy to answer your questions. I know Scott would be happy also.
So just to clarify, what we're doing in this first phase is replacing the radios that do the reads for the gas meters?
Yes, and that would be just purchasing them, and then obviously our guys are going to start putting in the commercials. So I have not budgeted the labor to install them. That's the 774, but we are also committing to the software, and then this would be putting up antennas on several of the water towers, Main Street and Veterans, and then also potentially out 98, where there's a little blind spot on that, on the meters out towards our station out there.
So the meters aren't being replaced?
The gas meters, we're going to keep, the American gas meters. We're going to keep those.
They're compatible, I guess.
This Census is in this business, and they're compatible with that.
Yeah, so currently, we're on a 28-year rotation for the residential gas meters, and we're in year seven of the 28-year rotation. So back in '07, '08, and '09, when these radios were put on, the meters were all made the same. So all, majority of the meters were bought in that timeframe. So I've tried to stretch that out, call it 30-year, actual 28-year rotation, so that gas meter can stay on a residential house for 20 years. So we're not going to replace the meters per se. Now, there's a few that we can incorporate that are up to be changed in 2020, I think, to do that, but the radios are what we're going after, and you don't need to go in and relight, and you don't need to do that. So what I'm planning on doing is getting bids from outside companies to find out what that radio install would cost, and then once I says that, we can take a look at maybe hiring some high school, college kids for the summer, like we did in '07, '08, and '09, and it worked out really good, where they did a real nice job for us. Our radios are failing quicker than the water because, for one, we're outside, and we've seen, I think, some pretty good molar more taxes, if you want to call it, for the lithium batteries. So the water radios are all in high swarm basements. They're in a controlled environment, in your basement. Gas radios are out in the elements. We were able to put ours on almost three to five years earlier than the water. So the water might be able to go a little bit farther with the Badger. We ran into issues that we can't get Badger gas radios anymore, especially on the commercial side. So when I put in an order in October of 2022 for the commercial radios, they still haven't come in, and that was frustrating because now we actually have to go out there and manually read it, but it's not as easy as manually reading. You have to take a laptop computer with you, you have to hook to it, you have to get it to talk, and then you pull the read out, and then you have to turn that read into the utility office. So I think with this plan, if you guys approve that, we'll be able to get all the commercials taken care of in-house and get that back up and running. And then what Craig's asking for is basically we're building the infrastructure for the gas radios, but it's also the infrastructure for the water radios whenever they're ready to jump on board. So we would be building, you know, the base stations would be paid for in this request. A manual reader would be paid for in this request until those base stations are up and running, and then the commercial would be up and running, and then we would have the money to purchase the residential radios. And this time around, they're kind of telling us that we could get 20 to 25 years out of these radios, which is a little bit more than the 12 to 15 window they gave us on the last ones. So if you do the math, '07, '08, and '09, and we're in 2024, we've really gotten a couple of bonus years out of this, knowing that about every month I get another sheet of another 20 that have died. So I would probably purchase the commercial radios and do all those and take care of that issue, and then maybe get a couple hundred residencials that we can do in-house to try and alleviate the ones that need manually reading and get back to that process to try to get us through, and to probably in the spring of 2025 to go after all of the residencials that would probably cost hopefully 20 or 25.
Now, we'd be making purchase of all the radios at this time?
I would say over the next year, yes. So we want to budget for that. So if you made purchase 200?
At this price?
That's the thing, you want to lock in the price.
Yes, we're trying to lock that.
Absolutely.
And your phase two would be your water meters and the radios?
Which would be, I mean, that's several million dollars now that could be spread out over, you know, every five years, we do a chunk of them, and that would be something we'll bring back to all of you to prepare a plan. We've discussed it, we're just not sure where we're at. I think we'd like Scott to be the guinea pig a little bit, let's kind of see how this goes, get the software up and running, and then we'll be prepared FY '26 to at least discuss or have a plan presented at that time.
And the water meters probably is going to be a longer-term replacement?
Exactly.
And I assume everything's with a Badger, you can still work off the Badger system meters?
Well, we're looking to go to Census, so we're hoping.
Once you start replacing water meters, you'd be?
Go to the Census radio with that.
Badger, Census.
And our meters aren't set up great. There is a solution for Census, the Badger, but it's, we're not set up very great with that.
Yeah, so on the water, I mean, I want to speak with Trent and Chad and those guys, but there's a little bit more unique investigation for a Badger water meter to be integrated into a Census radio. A little bit more work than on the gas side, where it's one cookie cutter, you know, if that makes sense. But what was unique was, once we found out that Civic is the billing software, and Civic works with Badger and Census, and there's multiple towns that view both, then we could basically say, all right, we can do a Badger radio at your house in the basement and put a Census radio on the gas meter outside, and the two of them can come together for one bill. As soon as we found out that that was an option, and a fairly, you know, non-headache-type option that other people are doing, then we're like, okay, well, that'll buy all kinds of time on the water side to do that if they want to continue with Badger or continue with Census.
The water side is going to be very difficult.
Okay. What meters are just? And we're excited to go to the Census, obviously with the technology available with smart metering, you know, the data that we'll be able to gather in the system long-term will be nice, you know, pressure potentially on some of the meters, obviously the auto, you know, shut off. Hopefully, we can lessen some of that long-term of sending guys out to shut water off, especially the frequent flyers, I call them, that continually can't pay their bill, stuff like that. So there's some exciting technology out there, too, with these meters. And we're excited. Leaks will be great. Who else show up to your house? We have one right now. You know, we've had several of these where they're just confused. It's a private issue. We try to help as much as we can, but between them and a plumber, they can't find the issue, whether it be a leaky toilet. Now we'll be able to plug right in, you know, as we go forward with the iPad and really be able to see what's going on.
And demonstrate that there is a way.
They all have audit trail capability. And the upgrade is, the system we're on right now, they have to drive. They have to drive in a truck. So the utility office has to download a flash drive, plug it into a computer, and then there's two different transmitters on there because there's a Badger CE and a Badger ME. They look driving around trying to get all these things. With this upgrade, we would have the base stations in place. There would be no more driving through 99% to 29% of the system. Utility office says, I want the read at April 1st at 8:00 AM. They hit the button, and it calls out, and they print all the reads. That is a pretty slick upgrade. And it has backup, so if you hit the button and it doesn't work, it's not like you've lost the reads for a month. So there's a backup to a backup in place so that you'll get the read.
And our superintendents, our meter reading employees, everyone's on board 100%. I want to make sure we have body in for everybody to move forward, so I think we're all on board with it.
Any other questions? Call the roll.
Minnold?
Yes.
Newman?
Yes.
Parrot?
Yes.
Balunier?
Yes.
Hilliard?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next is item D, is a resolution authorizing participation in a joint purchase master contract for the purchase of raw salt.
You could have a motion?
Motion to approve.
We've been purchasing our salt through IDOT central management system for quite a few years now with MMT funds, and just recently they're requesting this documentation so that, obviously, I'm asking for myself to be that person to authorize me to enter in agreements with IDOT CMS. I'm guessing there was the issue at some point that Kip was submitting those bids. So when we submit our purchase, which I anticipate this year to be 500 tons, so usually I come in front of you guys with the MMT resolution to authorize the spending, so that's the first catch, and then Kip and I go through the process and figure out how much we need, and then submit that bid with IDOT CMS, who's eventually purchasing salt for, I guess there's several hundred entities. They want to make sure that whoever submitted the paperwork is entering into an agreement on behalf of IDOT, so that's what this resolution's for.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Newman?
Yes.
Parrot?
Yes.
Balunier?
Yes.
Hilliard?
Yes.
Minnold?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next is item C, is a resolution appropriating funds and authorizing joint funding agreement with IDOT for Detroit Avenue Mill Overlay and Shared Use Path.
Got a motion?
Motion to approve. Second.
We're prepared to move forward on this project. We need to finalize our joint funding agreement. Essentially, what this does is says that we'll use general funds for the remainder of those funds. And this one does have the STU funds through the NPO for the overlay, the Mill and Overlay. It has TAP funding for the shared use path, and we intend to submit another grant that we believe we will get for the remainder of the bike trail. So this would authorize, I think it's 500,000, potentially out of general funds.
Any questions?
When's the letting on this?
Well, we're, one of the last items is, I got to go through a hearing with an attorney through the Illinois Commerce Commission for the crossing of the 10-foot trail at the railroad tracks, so we're trying to finalize that. At this point, I'm not sure we're going to make it before November letting, which means this project would most likely go all next year. Nice thing with that is we would do the shared use path first. Obviously, we want to tear up our new overlay, so the project's staged in that method. So hopefully, in the spring, right now is my, you know, my guest event. If it did come in an August letting, I will let all of you know, and then we can get out of the gate with that trail. But right now, it's looking like November letting, so for work next year, now that is budgeted in here, and we'd still need to budget that to get started in the spring.
Any other questions? Call the roll.
Parrot?
Yes.
Balunier?
Yes.
Hilliard?
Yes.
Minnold?
Yes.
Newman?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next is item D, acceptance of the following bids for the 2024 street overlay program. Is it okay if I read all three of these together?
Yes.
They're all dependent on each other. If you don't approve one, then I think we need to look at it a little closer, so keep that in mind as you approve them. From general funds for Mill and Overlay in the amount of $821,551.24 in award contract for same to R.A. Collin and Son Incorporated. From MMT funds for seal coating and fog cutting in the amounts of $85,091.93 in award contract for same to Porter Brothers. Lastly, acceptance of bid for the 2024 miscellaneous concrete repairs project in the amount of $845,000 in award contract for same to Autobomb Company Incorporated.
Motion to approve.
Second.
One thing I would like to add, I sent an email out to all of you. With the Mill and Overlay, I want to keep within the budget that we submitted, so I would like to deduct three of the small locations. We believe we're a little bit high just due to mobilization of some of those things. That, the three locations that we would eliminate from the project at this point would be Ken Magnolia and the alley between Washington and Adams to keep overall within budget. This would be a reduction of $246,016.37. R.A. Collin has accepted that change. I would like to approve the whole thing tonight and then just work with them to deduct those. But I at least wanted to share that with you tonight, especially as the budgets in front of you that reflects these numbers, what I just asked them to deduct. But I'd like to do that just administratively on my end.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Balunier?
Yes.
Hilliard?
Yes.
Minnold?
Yes.
Newman?
Yes.
Parrot?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next is item E, this is ordinance making amendments to Title 10 of the Morgan National Code regarding hotels and short-term vacation rooms.
Would you have a motion?
Sure. Second.
All right, this proposed ordinance received favorable recommendation of six overall call vote from the Plan Commission. The transcripts of the discussion are in your packet, and I would like, before we go any further, to have Pat just give a summary like you did at the Plan Commission on this ordinance.
So this ordinance makes several changes to the regulations currently in your code. Your current R4 zoning regulations would allow as a multifamily dwelling for what's called an apartment hotel, so we're proposing to strike that. You didn't have a current definition for hotel, so we plan to add a definition for what a hotel is and distinguish that from a short-term vacation rental. Your code currently does not have any regulations specific to short-term vacation rentals. The recommended ordinance would make those special uses in the R4 zoning district. They would not be permitted in R1, R2, or R3, or in any of our business districts, would be R4 only. For units in the R4 district, you'd be limited either to the lesser of 50% of the available units in a multifamily dwelling or four. So if you reach that threshold, you become a hotel. We want to distinguish and essentially regulate away facilities that are exclusively short-term rentals and distinguish those as a hotel. Larger facilities like an eightplex, for example, that's all short-term rental. There are a number of existing short-term vacation rentals in the village that would not be in compliance with this ordinance. They would be grandfathered from zoning regulations, but based on the changes in this ordinance, they would have to comply with our zoning permit requirement, including getting a life safety inspection done to ensure safety of the facilities. So there is a variety of approaches different communities have taken to regulating short-term rentals in coordination with administrative staff. This was felt to be the best approach from Morton and did receive that favorable recommendation from the Plan Commission.
Thank you. Do you have any further comments?
I just want to add, I put this information that Julie and Ben put together in front of you. These are the ones that are currently operating, at least the top half, in Morton today. So the top list would be considered non-conforming. We would work to reach out and give them a zoning permit that details that it's not conforming and would be allowed to continue.
So that's kind of just an administrative operation, I guess, to, I mean, you got to issue that zoning permit. You got to issue that permit, I guess.
Yes, exactly.
And I guess there's some life safety inspection that's part of it.
Exactly.
Once they don't operate anymore, then they're done?
So they would be subject to same restrictions on use as any grandfathered use? I don't remember those restrictions entirely offhand, but after a sufficient period of non-use within the category of the short-term rental, that the right to continue that use would expire. I believe it's one year in your code. But honestly?
Yeah, it's one year.
Okay.
But if they sell it, it automatically?
I don't recall one way or the other. I can pull that up in your code there.
I was thinking if they sold it, they had till a year to continue what it was.
I can tell you for sure, I don't want this to be your impression.
Question? Okay. So how would, unless they've notified you that they've discontinued use, how would you know?
So one issue that I can speak to is they're required to file a tax return as long as they're operating, and so we expect a return if they're engaged as a short-term rental. And so if they were to not file a return for a period of 12 months, that would seem to be evidentiary that they've discontinued to use. We have had some, and Julie could probably speak to this better than me, but some that have reached out when they received our notification that they need to file a return and say, I'm not offering it as a short-term rental anymore, and they withdraw them from the publicly available listed sites. I did find, I don't, I'm not immediately seeing in your regulations, 1042 is the regulations of non-conforming uses, so it does provide for that continuation as long as there's no physical change other than maintenance and repair. If it ceases for a period of one year or more, then it cannot be reestablished. And if it's not a principal building, so like if it was, yeah, that probably wouldn't be too often in your case, but there might be a, you know, converted garage or something that would have a shorter six-month period. And then there's provisions if it's structurally altered, reconstructed. I don't see a trigger based on sale. So based on what I'm seeing, and I can send, I can review this in more detail and send follow-up correspondence if I'm incorrect, but I'm not presently seeing a restriction that says if it's sold, that non-conforming status ends.
Do the trustees want to add that?
My suggestion, Your Honor, would be if that is something the trustees wish to have changed, that's a general non-conforming uses regulation, so that would require a new hearing before the Plan Commission. That'd certainly be something I could draft an ordinance for and pursue if that was the will of the Board, but we wouldn't be able to address it tonight as part of this ordinance.
I don't think it's necessary.
Okay.
What'd you say? I'm giving it the way it is. I'm giving it the way it is.
Anyone have any other questions? Call the roll.
Hilliard?
Yes.
Minnold?
Yes.
Newman?
Yes.
Parrot?
Yes.
Balunier?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And thanks to all giving that under. And thanks to all giving that under control.
Lastly, we have item F. An ordinance making prohibiting the use of groundwater as a potable water supply by installation of used potable water supply wells or by any other method.
Any question? I'm sorry.
Motion to approve. Second.
Yeah, so just real quick, Groundwater and Environmental Services Incorporated reached out on behalf of their client. I did give you a, a more clear map. I think you can start to see who their client most likely is. I'm not 100% sure, but I think I know who it is. But this limited groundwater ordinance is part of a corrective action plan that was submitted and approved by the EPA. So this would just be a local ordinance for us to give it and to solidify their plan with the EPA.
This kind of adds to, we took action a couple of months ago, uh, for some other properties there.
Both Corin Maine and Jackson, so they're almost connected, so. For work to get this map with those two probably on our G I, G I S, just so we know where everything's at.
It is just for a potable water use, cooling water, something of that use would still be allowed.
Exactly, that is just a potable water. Due to the activity that's been there for many years.
Any other questions? Call the roll.
Mennel?
Yes.
Newman?
Yes.
Parrott?
Yes.
Looneyear?
Yes.
Hilliard?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Any trustees have anything tonight? If not, if we could have a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
All of those in favor?